Mr. Thompson, we're live.
Welcome everyone back to from break. March thirty first Commission meeting and next up is our public relations update from Mackenzie Craver.
Hello, it's been a while. Um, so I thought I would start with sort of our um, basic analytics, just to give you guys an idea of where we're at. Uh, spring is always a little slow, but it just is. Um, but on our website, um, in the last thirty days, we've had eight point two thousand active users, uh, seven point two thousand of those are new. So still seeing a lot of new people hit our website. In terms of what they are looking for, we've had twenty-five thousand page views. So of the eight point two thousand people that that um, hit the website, they were looking at multiple pages, twenty-five thousand individual page views. And this month, they have really been looking at um, assessments, assessor's office, uh, property assessment. Uh, those are three of the biggest um, visited pages. And then we're seeing a lot of um, the our webcam pages be hit. So we have several, we have area webcams um, and recreation webcams. Those are hit three and four this month. So I think people are really just looking at the weather. Um, the jail and the sheriff's office are in our top ten as well. Um, and then the recreation strategic plan was the tenth most visited page, which I think is really good because we've been pushing that to get public comment. So it obviously is showing up that people are hitting that page. So that's great. In terms of where people are are coming from, uh, pretty, pretty, pretty standard. Um, most people are coming from Boise, Nampa, uh, Treasure Valley area, followed by Phoenix and then Salt Lake City, Seattle, and then McCall. So there we go. That always is like shocking to me where people are coming from. I think some of it has to do with where their IP router comes from. Uh, but generally speaking, it is also where they are physically located. So. Do you guys have any questions about the web website data at this point? Or anything on the website that we we want to cover while we're chatting website?
Uh, one word, when you're talking recreation, is most of it asking about recreation in the area? Is that kind of the primary that people are looking at?
I think so. I think what people, um, what I'm looking at them see is the recreation webcams. Uh, so what I interpret that as they're looking at the weather before they head out to go ski or snowmobile or or do whatever they're gonna do. Um, on the recreation strategic plan, that was the other one. Um, it's a new page and just part of the the strategic plan that's posted there with the link for public comment. So that's the other recreation piece of the website that's really getting traffic in the last thirty days.
All right.
Great. Um, I'm gonna pop over to social. Um, at this point, the last thirty days, our engagement rate, which is honestly what I look at as kind of our our biggest benchmark. Yeah, engagement rate is basically, you know, how how much are people commenting, liking, sharing? Uh, you know, all that good stuff on our posts and our our rate is six point one percent. It's down just slightly from the last, from the previous thirty days, but six point one is a very high engagement rate. So that tells me that the content that we um, share is is engageable. It means people are are at least finding some reason to do something with our content. Um, overall, we had about twelve thousand impressions um, that we got in front of of people. So that's up about thirty percent from the previous thirty days. Uh, our top performing posts this month ironically are P and Z agendas. People have a lot of stake in what is on those agendas. So those got a lot of um, got a lot of engagement this month. Uh, I will, I will say, I know I'm shocking. Um, one of the things, we've been a little slow on the social media posting and part of that is because my attention has been really focused on overhauling our entire content calendar. Uh, and so I feel like I finally have a really solid content calendar in place that starts today, actually. Um, and what I did, we talked about this a lot about being more proactive instead of reactive, not just posting things after they happen, but really getting in and making sure we're sharing a lot of the different programs, information that we have on the website. It's very deep and there's a lot of stuff on there. So as I did this, it's basically a four week content matrix. So it sets us up to post something every single business day. So Monday through Friday, a different post, and it hits every department or major topic that is on the website at least once a month. Um, the exception being, I feel like recreation content is important and usually changes pretty fast. We have a lot of safety stuff. We have a lot of, you know, up to date information as people are traveling here. So that will happen every week. In addition to uh, posts for every department happening at least once a month. And within that then, I went through and put the primary post ideas, like the main topics for every month of the year, so that we can try to hit really important data and um, deadlines and, you know, big programs as they happen so that we don't miss them. So um, I'm happy to send this to you. It's kind of a big, big chunk of of information, but this is what I'm gonna work off of starting today, actually. I wanted it to start in April, so we're gonna start it on Monday because I like starting on Mondays more than I like starting on Tuesdays. So um, as you'll see, our our posts ramp up quite a bit over the next month. I'd like to trial this for at least ninety days, like give it three months and see where it's at and then see how we make adjustments. But what this also does, I think, um, you know, I email each department kind of at the beginning of the month, and I think it's hard for everybody to come up with ideas every month. And so in this way, I will be able to present the next couple of months, the topics I'd like to hit and confirm that that works with the department. And then if there's any additional information based on those topics, they can provide that. I'm hoping it makes it a little bit easier, sort of tease up the information that I'd like to post and and just all around make everyone's lives easier, get more information out. So I will email this over to you so you can see it, but that's what I've been working on. So we're gonna take this off today if that sounds good.
Mackenzie, I got, I don't know if you dial it down on your post that tight, but you um, post things like Donnelly Fun Run or the Veterans Right, you know, that we did here a while back. You post things like that on this, on the site, uh, to keep people informed? You go down that small or you're more in general?
Well, and that's where I think the recreation topic on a weekly basis comes in well because a lot of that stuff does tie in with some recreational aspect. Um, we don't post a ton of community events just because it's really difficult to keep on top of those. I think the chambers do a really good job of maintaining those events. Um, and then also the extension office. So part of this calendar is also to check weekly on various um, other social channels and just share their content. So it's very likely that we might have, you know, two or two posts a day, uh, depending on on what's happening. But I think that sets us up well to just be able to share additional content. I don't usually create content around events that the county itself is not hosting, just because I don't want to get it wrong. Uh, so I'd rather share it from other sites. So that's kind of the the concept there is to to check in at least once a week on on chambers and extension office and share what's relevant.
Oh, just, I was curious.
Yeah, of course. I'm always happy to post if there's something that you or anyone feels uh, should be, should be pushed out to the world, just ping me if I if I miss it, then then please send it my way.
Mackenzie, on um, on some of that stuff. So I know that Brittany Brand has been in communication with you on all of the hazard resilience work that we're doing. Have you got a special focus on that to make sure that we're gonna be pushing out that content? And then I know that they're trying to get all the new evacuation zones done before summer. We'll need to spend some time and energy pushing all that stuff out.
I do have um, emergency management accounted for in my um, in my plan. And that definitely, I actually have a note to myself next month about the evacuation zone update. So that was good timing. Um, so there's definitely room in there. I also kind of consider the the ha- the the hazard plan sort of a, um, I don't want to say special project, but it sort of is like it it comes up. It's not part of our regular cycle, but there's definitely room in here to add whatever we need to. Um, to be really honest, I not a hundred percent sure what I need to be sharing on that. I'm sort of waiting for some direction. So I'm happy to post whatever. I just want to make sure it's accurate and in line. I know that they were building the landing page. So um, I hadn't seen that yet. Um, but if we, I'm happy to share all of that and that that can be included in here. There's a lot of one-off things that will also go. But what I'm uh, want to make sure we're doing with this calendar is hitting every major department and I would say kind of category at least once a month so that we don't miss it. Because I think there's so much information that um, we tend to remember after the fact, or at least I do. So this is helping me try to stay on top of that. But if any of that stuff comes up, there is a hundred percent room uh, to put any of that into this calendar at any time.
I know she's been pushing out surveys. So pushing it up the surveys, yeah, would be really important. So I will uh, reach back to her today and ask if that's something that we need to be doing.
Okay, and I'm happy to do that and I can ping her as well, just to make sure that we're not missing that. I just, um, I haven't seen, I haven't seen those yet. So um.
That'd be great. If you'd reach out to her. I'm just not feeling well today, so I don't know if I'm gonna do that today or not.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
So Sherry, we want to um, post it on the website as we start transitioning down to the uh, annex to let people know that, you know, those departments are gonna be down there now.
We will need to do that. Yeah, we will need to do a lot of advertising around that, but that's probably, I would think, three months out.
Oh, yeah. That's gonna be a big move.
Perfect. I'll just put that on my note and then um, also, you know, if there's anything um, that comes up that you guys want me to be aware of as well, I mean, feel free to to call, text or email. And I'll make sure I put that on my calendar and then you can take it out of your brain and I'll put it into my brain so that you don't have to remember.
That I like.
Awesome. All right.
Do we have anything else for Mackenzie?
I don't think so.
Mackenzie, now that you're rebranding, do we need a new MOU with you? Is it still under your new LLC or when when did your stuff come up for you know?
Well, I think Doug and I talked about this briefly. Um, I don't actually have a contract in place. So uh, something that's on the list. So yes, um, technically my rebrand is, it's just a DBA. So my original, like my um, S corp name hasn't changed, so legally it's fine. Um, but it's definitely something that was on our list as we go through this next round of budgeting to get all that shipshape. And um, I have a very long ago MOU, I think that we we put into place, but it's now seven years old maybe? Five, seven, seven?
Yeah, I was there when you got hired, so probably five.
Okay, five, there we go. Okay, it feels like it's been a while. So yeah. All taken care of.
All right, if there's nothing else, Mackenzie, thank you so much for the update. That's awesome.
Perfect.
Any ladies got anything else to say? I guess we're good.
Thanks. All right. Well, thanks so much.
Thanks, gentlemen lady.
Bye-bye.
Hi, Mr. Miller, we got, we got, we got Cameron up next.
And I don't know if Cameron's gonna join or not, to be honest with you. Um, can't remember if I asked him or not. That probably was party foul on me. Um, the new one though is adding the the engineering for the parking lot and that extension. So they were happy to do that. I gotta see if he actually sent me what that was gonna cost or if they, might be my fault, guys.
Yeah, the only thing he sent me had to do with the uh, these landfill. I haven't seen anything else on the annex.
Yeah, I probably put that on there too soon. He does not have me a cost yet and what it's gonna be. Um, I actually think I put that on there though to make sure that that is the direction we wanted to go is to put that over uh, under him in order to move forward with that.
Um, he's so he's just gonna do the um, he's just gonna do the scope of work as far as from an architect's point of view, is that right?
Well, that parking lot has to be engineered and the new access into the fairgrounds. I talked to Dan Coontz and Dan does not have time to do that work. And so he was gonna go out and um, look for engineers that that had a ba- availability to do this. I mentioned Vince from Bowley called me, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. He's not with ITD anymore. He's with a new engineering firm called Jacobs and they would like to get in and be able to do some county work. So I gave that information to Cameron because the engineer that they had worked with through the architect in the past was not available. And this needs to be done like ASAP because that parking lot really needs to be done, in my opinion, you know, sooner rather than later, or at least before all any employees get moved down there. DMV can't move down there until we have all of that construction done.
Yeah, that's a high number one priority thing is get that parking lot adjusted because we're gonna have a lot of park, or vehicles down there.
Um, parking lot, what are we gonna do if we don't have the funds to build it?
I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, maybe, we may have to see, like, out of the box, maybe DMV does have to stay here for a little while or, I mean, we just keep getting hit on budget at different ends, so.
Yeah, I mean, we probably are gonna have to use some of pilt. Doug, I'm not certain when we get our next pilt payment, but it feels like it's probably May or June. Um, so we may have to look at what we have in pilt in order to get some of that finished. But I just, I don't have any idea what it's gonna cost. And we haven't done any cost estimates on that parking lot at all.
Right.
Since we don't personally.
Doug, what do we have in reserves?
So commissioners, we have one point five million dollars in pilt and that was the threshold that the commissioners agreed upon. Uh, it is possible that you could access that, those funds with the understanding that we will get another payment from pilt hopefully in June between eight hundred thousand and nine hundred thousand. Uh, I think the direction that the commissioners are taking though is to to conduct um, an engineering study of that area is probably most responsible at this point in time to get a cost estimate. And then the funding would either be, in my opinion, can be pilt, maybe some ARPA dollars. We might have some ARPA dollars left over, not a lot. We need to identify if all of those committed dollars have been expended. Uh, the, the funds that were gonna be used for the the road department build, those have all been dedicated. I do not believe that there's any LATCF money available any longer. So realistically, the commissioners would have general fund reserve, pilt, or the possibility of ARPA. If uh, I think the first step needs, that needs to be take place though is what is that parking gonna look like down at the annex? Is it gonna be the public the primary focus? Or employees gonna be the first primary fo- focus? Um, and then as Commissioner Caldwell said, doesn't make sense to have DMV stay here until something can be identified for those individuals that are registering new vehicles, new trailers with the um, ability to to come in, park conveniently. Uh, has that been identified? So I think the first step does make sense to hire that out for engineering work and then the commissioners ultimately are gonna have to make a determination of priority for parking. Sorry, that's a long.
No, that was, oh, excellent. Appreciate, appreciate the information.
Doug, the pilt pa- payment coming in, that we use part of that to backfill the budget, don't we?
Three hundred thousand, Commissioner Mopin. So realistically, we'll have approximately six hundred thousand that would just go into the general fund.
Okay, and that's kind of what, in the back of my mind, when all of this is coming around and that bid came in so high down there, I I thought we were probably gonna have to use some pilt in order to get this project finished. And that's what those funds are really for. That is our savings account for when we need to do this stuff, so. But we may have to phase it out. You're right, Kathleen, that, you know, I mean, if it doesn't work out or we can do it all at once, we're gonna have to phase it. So um, but we've got to get started and and get some numbers behind all of this.
We may have to.
And then.
We have to do some of it just gravel for the time being too.
Yeah, the access down to the fairgrounds and, you know, a secondary parking lot, we may have to do is, is that. I don't know that gravel would still work up top after it's been paved. Uh, that's not my forte. I don't know.
I don't know, really don't want to do that.
Yeah. Um, but then also, at the same time, we do need to get some idea on what this is gonna cost as far as our interior work. Um, so if you guys want me to, I can reach out to ICL and start working with them, see if they could look at our plans and figure out kind of what we're gonna need. I work with the architect to get a detailed drawing.
Yeah, we need to, does Cameron, as of yet, have any idea? Is he putting together a cost of any of this or is he just drawing the prints?
A cost of any of what, you know?
Of building the walls that are gonna be in there and and whatnot.
So the construction drawing should be done this week. Um, so then from those construction drawings, they will get hard bids.
And he's gonna be doing that? He's gonna be asking for the bids?
Yes. He's bidding everything on the permanent wall structure and anything that needs to be done there.
Okay, okay.
So I will just have them add the parking lot engineering to that, for now anyway. And then we'll see what ICL can do for us as far as giving us a cost on the temporary stuff and all the deaths.
Okay. All right, I'll just keep going forward on it then.
And I'll let him know to move forward on the engineering and get that back to the parking lot ASAP.
Yep. Yeah, that's gonna be a number one item needs to happen. So it's, that's a big one.
And, and they will go ahead and put out all of the construction work to all the local companies. But hopefully someone local will have the time because now we're gonna be in the middle of summer. So it's, it's gonna be a problem, I think, but we're just gonna make it, make it work.
Yeah, and you know, construction's gonna take off slow just because of the amount of snow we're dealing with up here right now. But um, some of these guys have construction companies, they can push that snow back and start doing that parking lot now, I'd think. I mean, it's, it's melting fast and now would be the time to grab, grab somebody and get them to work. So, you know, need to push Cameron a little bit on that. That's all I got. Um, anything else you want to share on that? Let's uh, let's go to our next item. Um, discussion on temporary housing for the county employees who live in council and now as of today are driving around.
You guys want to come on up? We can get you some microphones down there.
Kathleen, could you give an update on what ITD stated also at the meeting last week? There is another meeting tomorrow, but I have another appointment at the same time.
I am planning to attend that. I don't know whether you can hear me yet. I'm planning to attend that. And yes, I'm gonna give an update.
That one is working. Tinda just used it.
It is working?
Large green lights on.
We have one here. You guys can share?
Yes.
We got the two mics up here.
Sure, I don't know.
Third mic.
You can see that we have Mike Savoy and Mike LaCroix with us was.
Um, I was unable to get anybody from the road department on the phone, so. So real basic, just to refresh everybody, uh, with the sudden and unexpected closure of Highway ninety-five between Council and Horseshoe Bend or New Meadows, um, we, that has stranded two of our employees who work for the county on the other side of that uh, dead zone, if you will. Uh, we have one employee who worked for the road department. He currently lives in Council and works in Lake Fork. Normally that is a forty-five minute commute for him. Um, if he were to have to drive around the other way, that's taking him down through Hayette, uh, Fruitland, swing all the way around, getting into Emmet and then coming up through Horseshoe Bend. It goes from forty-five miles up to two hundred miles for him. So he's looking at almost a four hour commute doing that. And you're talking going through every one of those little one-horse towns. We have a second employee working for the jail for Mr. LaCroix over here. She lives in Cambridge and commutes around Cascade at the jail. Uh, that's a ninety mile drive for her. So she's already got a pretty big commute that she does. Uh, but having to do that same swing around the southern route would uh, tack her up to a hundred and fifty miles one way. So that's a pretty healthy burden uh, for two of our employees. Obviously, the jail and our road department right now are probably two of our, I mean, the jail is always urgent and critical, but the road department right now is pretty critical as well. And those are two employees with, I would say, very transferable skills that I'm sure Adams County would love to bag. And so if we can hang on to them for a month to a month and a half by, and I don't know that either of them would leave, but these are two, you know, valued employees of ours that we would like to take care of. So um, anything we can do to help their commute situation during this, whatever we're looking at, four to six weeks, uh, I would recommend.
Have you guys spoken personally to both of them about the situation and how it would work? They'd have to stay in a hotel and?
So we already have the one employee with the road department. Uh, he was actually sleeping on a couch up at the Lake Fork shop for a little while and we were like, no, 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 we're, we're a little classier than that here. So uh, we put him up in Hotel Novo for a little while. And we're looking at right now um, other accommodations. Uh, one of the places that's being looked at is the um, Boulder Creek Inn in Donnelly. Um, it's a little bit more centrally located. I mean, our individual, our road department guy was, you know, driving all the way down to Cascade to go back up to Lake Fork and driving right past Donnelly. But I mean, it's still better than commuting all the way around the circle. Um, and I'm sure he was plenty happy to have that accommodation. Um, Boulder Creek Inn is a little bit less expensive than Novo and again, a little bit more centrally located. Um, there's some pluses and minuses to that option, uh, some pros and cons. And I know.
Yeah, they have like kitchenette in there, so they don't have to eat out every meal.
Correct. And that was another plus of the Boulder Creek is that they have the kitchenettes. And I know that was one of the considerations was, you know, you don't have to eat out. You can cook in and do something there. It's a little bit nicer. Um, whether or not the accommodations are as nice as Novo is either here nor there for me. But I know Lieutenant LaCroix was asking me also about Airbnb options, if that could be an option for, uh, you know, one or both of them. We know we've got a lot of vacation rental properties here in the valley. Um, some of those are honestly very affordable and probably comparable to what they would get uh, at an inn for an extended period. The only thing is, is that we are, we're looking at situations where we might only need four days of the stretch and a period off, then another four days of the stretch. I don't think we're talking at all.
Yours is shift work, is that right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're not talking at all about parking these two folks here, you know, seven days a week for a month and a half to two months. We're looking at, okay, we, we need them here for a few days. Obviously, at the end of their shift, they'll go home.
How does that work with, I mean, like that inn you're talking about, that run, what'd you say, runny din? How does that work with, I mean, like that inn you're talking about, that run, what'd you say, Runney Inn?
Boulder Creek Inn.
Creek Inn, sorry. Um, how's that work with them? Say, he's in there for five days, Monday through Friday, and then she's in there four days doing, and, and who knows what her schedule is?
They would each have to have their own room.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
But I mean, are they okay with that? Because when they come back, she comes back from her four days off and needs a room, I think they'll have another room there for them.
Oh, it's always a possibility. I don't know that that Boulder Creek Inn's ever anywhere near that capacity, not this time of year. This has gotta be their...
They operate pretty much as a standard hotel and usually have availability.
This has gotta be pretty much an off-season time. I mean, who wants to drive around in this slop right now out there?
I think, I think that's our...
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I also feel like we need to pay for their mileage
for having to make that big of a trip around until this is over with.
Uh, the only counter I would give to that commissioner is, um, we don't, it's their choice where they live.
I know that, but we're asking them to drive another three hours compared to the one hour that they were driving.
That's true.
And so I feel it's only fair to, you know, supplement them somehow on, uh, you know, their mileage, having to drive that far.
Would we have the ability? And would this be a possible counter? Would we have the ability to give them county vehicles to commute with during this period of time? Would that be a good or bad option?
I don't. I don't know that one.
Um, it would be availability probably with Jeff. Um, I did have Jeff do some research work last week on the cost of all this. Uh, Boulder Creek Inn is 109 a night. And so if you think about the fact they are gonna have to drive extra for that, for the going to Valley County and home from Valley County, but it saves them a lot of traffic for, or a lot of mileage throughout the week. So I think that offsets it with us putting them up in a hotel. Because now he's just gonna have to go back and forth from, you know, Lake Fork to Donnelly instead of Lake Fork clear home. So I think on the mileage front, it's probably the same.
I hadn't thought of that. Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
So last week, I did participate in an update, and if, I think if you or Jeff wanted to participate too, it's for county officials or... And it was, uh, is Julie the mayor of New Meadows, Sherry?
She is, yes.
Okay, so it was her and I on, and they were talking about some options, um, mostly for EMS and sheriff, but also possibly mi- mi- not this week, but in the next week or so. Maybe being able to utilize the Weezer River Trail. It's about 0.75 miles. Um, can be traveled on foot. Um, currently is non-motorized, but what, uh, Mayor Julie was talking about with the ITD folks is the possibility of maybe shuttling e- every morning and every evening on that trail. Um, using some sort of an ATV with a people mover or a wagon or... I know it sounds like we're kind of going back to the Wild Wild West here, but they are, um, trying to see if that was an option. Uh, there's a line that comes out of New Meadows every day. It's a bus, and they're willing to get them to help out to, um, help shuttle. So what they were wondering is if we could talk to our folks and see if there was any interest in that so that they could go home every night, um, as an alternative.
Yeah, we can definitely relay that to our people.
We do have horses now. We do.
You could just tap a horse on each side. And there's another call tomorrow, so, um, I was questioning their timeline, but it's an extensive job with what they have to do, and the contractor won't even be able to go back and forth through there, starting on one side and backing clear up, so. It's gonna be intense. But they are running two shifts, six days a week. That's important.
And I don't know if it, you know, I don't know if you guys talked to them about, you know, doing something like that, but is it a problem for them being away from home four days? Or five days at a time?
It doesn't sound like it's a huge issue, but there are some logistics that they gotta figure out, like, uh, one of them has horses, so getting horses fed and...
Somebody to take care of the horses.
Yeah. But it, it could be done by a neighbor or something. But there are some logistics that need to get figured out.
I think the road department employee actually probably stayed last night at Boulder Creek Inn because he had to be at work this morning at seven. And they closed that, that road last night at eight, so I'm not certain about the detention. I can't remember her name, I'm sorry.
Michelle Gams.
Yeah, okay, so I don't know when her first shift is, if she's already up here or not.
She's not yet.
But I, okay. I know the road department employee was due at work this morning at seven, so I'm sure Jeff already put him up last night. So I think, you know, we need to go ahead and, uh, and approve, um, them to do this, but I think that some of the alternatives need to be considered if they are available to us.
Commissioner Caldwell, if we have either of those folks interested in maybe seeing about commuting through the area like you were suggesting, who would their contact? Who should they reach out to? Would it be?
Uh, they could go ahead and reach out to me.
Okay.
And then I can help coordinate with the ITD folks.
Excellent, thank you.
Because what I read on that Weezer trail that it was gonna be kept open for EMS, you know, life safety people, so they must be able to drive that trail.
Um, it's still snow-packed. They can, they can drive on it with a side-by-side, but it's an old trail. It's
I know it's a small trail, but I, I was curious what they were talking about, if they could actually take an ambulance through there or...
No, I believe what they're, they're gonna have a side-by-side staged with a sheriff's vehicle on the other side, so if they had to get through there quickly, um, emergency personnel. Am I correct, Sheriff Capery?
You are. Um, what they wanted to do is keep a UTV on the, on the south side.
Come up here so everyone can hear you, please.
I've been talking with Sheriff Zolman, uh, because we're also looking at MOU for if they do have to arrest somebody north that they come to, can come to Valley County until Adams can come all the way around to pick them up. And so that's what he was talking about. They're gonna keep a UTV um, staged on the south side. If something happens with a patrol car on the north side, they can go get the UTV, get to their patrol car, and deal with whatever the crime is, New Meadows or North, whatever that is. And like I said, we'd, we'd be available to help them with that as well. But they needed an MOU to bring them to our jail district, so, um, yeah, that's what they're doing. My, my only thing is my concern on that is if they only have one UTV, a hot call comes in and now, now that UTV is not there to be staged to bring the first responders to get them to the north side.
How do you get that UTV back there?
All of a sudden, that's becoming a, a, a transport vehicle, and it's not sitting there staged ready for an emergency, whether that be a ambulance or a sheriff.
Right.
That, that would be my concern on that.
Somebody would have to be with that vehicle 24/7.
Fortunately, it's only three-quarters of a mile.
Right, right, so.
What I'm saying is, say he comes to work, if there's not somebody to take that UTV and bring him down to this inn, and then they gotta take that UTV back.
This is only emergency.
Well, then...
So they're not even gonna be using that UTV morning and night. They're talking about a different program to help transfer people.
I think it's, I think our best bet is do that hotel and just let them work it out. Just, uh, they can drive around and stay in the hotel for whatever days, and then they can go home after their week's up or shift's up.
Can we explore Airbnb options locally that are relatively the same price?
I mean, we could, um...
Do you think you can find one for 109 a night? That's pretty cheap for...
Yeah, I think I, I think I found one, uh, already. I've been doing some, some homework, but I have, uh, just some uh, first responder safety concerns for Boulder Creek Inn. Um, that's, that's just where, where my, where my heart is uh, right now. Um, just based on our line of work. Um, it's nothing against business itself. It's, uh, it's just, um, putting ourselves in that situation for me um, is, is difficult without, uh, just at least expressing my concern, so. That's why I, I talked to Mike and Sheriff about this, and, um, if I can find something um, for Michelle, it would be, I, I feel like it would be better for us, but...
You know, that's fine. I'll be, but if you okay, if you did a DMV or whatever that is, short-term rental, um, you'd be putting both these individuals in the same one?
Just, just one.
Just one?
That was my thought at first. Uh, I didn't realize we had, uh, male and female, uh, when, when it first started.
They don't even know each other. And that, that was, that was my concern.
We don't want them to know each other.
That was my concern. I didn't like that idea.
No, we would have to find an Airbnb, and I believe Lieutenant LaCroix has thought an Airbnb that'd be comparable in price per night for one individual to stay there, comparable to the Boulder Creek Inn.
And that, I'm, I'm fine with that. You know, if you keep the price the same, hey, that's, that's fine with us. I don't see a problem with that.
Lieutenant means about right for that, because they weren't seasoned or it's, you know, work with us. And I mean, like, like Lieutenant LaCroix said, all these Airbnb people are willing to work with us as the fires too. If we needed extra responders up here, they were like, hey, we will, we'll reduce, we'll do whatever we can to help you, so. I mean, we're fairly fortunate to live in a, in a county that is very pro first responders and willing to help us out on times of need. And so, uh, Lieutenant's been working on that. I'm confident that he can get it to about the same rate.
So what would be your guys' recommendation to? Do that?
Yep, my recommendation would be either the Boulder Creek Inn or an Airbnb of comparable price.
Okay, and this is something you guys will handle and take care of? I need it come to the table. What do you, Sherry? Kathleen?
I agree with that. I think this is important to do, so.
Alright, and we won't be paying for their travel around. They're saving that on being here short, okay? I'm good with all that. Um, do we need a motion for this, or?
I believe so. It's an action item, so I would move that we approve the overnight stays for two employees um, at either Boulder Creek Inn or a comparable VRBO until such time as Highway 95 is reopened and they can continue to commute to home.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, in your basket now.
Alright, thank you very much. I would like to thank the commission for thinking of the employees, and actually, the, the commission brought this up, and I just, my gratitude for thinking of the employees. Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome. But it's gonna work out. Okay, we are, you wanna take a short break?
Ken, if we need to...
I'm gonna take a short break.
Okay.
Do you wanna go ahead and go into it so that Doug can take us off?
Uh, we can?
Yep, go ahead.
I would move that we go into executive session, priority code 742061I.
Second.
Need a roll call?
Op and I.
Thompson, I.
Caldwell, I.